Good afternoon. I will call to order the April 25th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, Lukey Pierre, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the April 11th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to sort through the agenda, determine which items will be on consent, and which items we will discuss. There are hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. And I will start at the top. So, item one is the Western Line on Second Townhomes at 2415, 2419, and 2423, Second Street Northeast, sets of preliminary and final plat. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item two is at 1911 Niclet Avenue. That's a rezoning. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item three is the Alpha Epsilon Pi Fraternity House at 1100 Fifth Street Southeast. That's a conditional use permit. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item four is Wells Fargo at 1505 West Lake Street. That's a variance for wall signs. We'll discuss item four. Item five is the Sojourner Truth Academy Building Addition at 3820 Emerson Avenue North. Several applications for an addition to a school. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put item five on consent. Item six is the 26th and Stevens Apartments at 113 East 26th Street. That is a conditional use permit amendment for the height of a stair enclosure. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item seven is the HCMC Ambulatory Outpatient Specialty Center signage at 801 through 829 Park Avenue, 715 through 721 Eighth Street South, and 816 Chicago Avenue. Several applications related to signs. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? We have a few people, so we will discuss item seven. Item eight is Marshall Flats at 2525 Second Street Northeast. Several applications for a new supportive housing project there. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put item eight on consent. Lastly, item nine is a zoning code text amendment related to community service facilities. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent as well. So, our agenda as amended is items one, two, three, five, six, eight, and nine will be on consent, and we will discuss items four and seven. They have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that motion carries. We'll move on now to the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That is items one, two, three, five, six, eight, and nine. Is there anyone wishing to speak on items one, two, three, five, six, eight, or nine? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our two items for discussion. First is item four, and staff is Ms. Hollein.
The item before you is variances for two wall signs on the proposed building at 1505 West Lake Street. This is an application that was before you back in November of 2015, associated with the construction of the new Wells Fargo Bank in this location. There were a series of applications that were approved at that time. Also, at that time, the Planning Commission did deny variances for wall signs. The variances before you now have been modified slightly over what was initially before the Commission. So, what you saw back in November were two wall signs that each exceeded the maximum height and the maximum area in the C1 district. So, showing here a top-down comparison. So, the top item, or the top photo, is showing the signs that were proposed back in November. So, those signs were 52.5 square feet in area each, and almost 22 feet in height. On the bottom, this is showing the new proposed signs. So, you can see the corner element has been lowered, and the proposed signs are now 19 feet, 1 inch in height, I believe? Yes. 19 feet, 4 inches in height, and 40 square feet in area. So, there are two signs, one on the north elevation facing Lake Street, and one on the east elevation facing Humboldt. So, the maximum height allowed in the C1 district is 14 feet. That dates back to when the first floor of a building couldn't exceed 14 feet in height. Now, you can go up to 20, but we never changed the sign regulations. So, the area is now compliant with the maximum size of 45 square feet, so we're just looking at variances to heights. It's also worth noting, they did previously propose a sign on the south elevation facing the parking lot, and that sign has been removed as part of the proposed application. As far as the findings go, finding number one asks us to find whether or not there are practical difficulties due to circumstances unique to the property. In this case, staff did not find that practical difficulties exist in complying with the sign height. This is a new building with no unique identification needs, and while there is a bit of a grade change along Lake Street that you can see here, even if we measured from the first floor elevation of the building, the signs would still exceed 14 feet in height. So, if we measured from the interior first floor elevation, the signs would be 15.91 feet in height, and as measured from grade, again, they're 19 feet, 4 inches. Finding number two asks us to look at whether or not the signs are reasonable and in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and the comprehensive plan. We do have a pedestrian-oriented overlay district here, so while they're not proposing any freestanding signage, the signs are really intended to be geared more towards pedestrians, and in that sense, we weren't able to make finding number two. However, the remainder of the findings, the sign will not alter the essential character of the locality. This is on West Lake Street. There are certainly other taller signs in the area. That is, you can see kind of here. These show it a little bit better. That's partially due to the fact that this parcel is zone C1, which in itself is a little bit unique along this section of West Lake Street, but other buildings that have C2 or C3A zoning are allowed taller signs as of right. The additional findings for signage ask us to look at whether or not the proposed signage would increase sign clutter or lead to sign clutter on the site. In this case, no, these two wall signs will not lead to sign clutter. They are in keeping with the overall scale and character of the building, but it's really findings one and two that staff wasn't able to make on this application. So, I can close there and answer any questions. The applicant is also present tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Lukey Pierre, you have a question for staff?
Hi, Kim. Just to be clarified then, so if they were to comply with the signage requirement, it would be pretty much mean that the text would have to move to pretty much the location of the red awning over the entryway.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? If there are none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good afternoon. My name is Charlie Shalil with Site Enhancement Services. With me today as well is Tony Frytag from Wells Fargo. First off, excuse me, thank you for allowing us to come before you this afternoon and discuss this, what we consider to be a very important issue. What we have here is a modified request from what you previously saw to what you see today. And while I understand that there are similar architectural features as previously involved, this building and this property and the location itself has been somewhat of a challenge to incorporate all of the pedestrian-oriented features that are required in this overlay while still making a functional retail banking business. If you're familiar with the site currently, the branch that's been there since 1973 is pushed significantly far back off of West Lake. We're pulling the business all the way to the front property line. In doing so, as staff alluded to, there's roughly a, from south to north, a three-foot grade change issue that we're having to deal with. So, that three-foot grade change puts us at a distinct disadvantage already when we're starting out here. The building architecture, because of the window coverage area or the impervious window surface area that we have to have for the pedestrian overlay, as well as awnings as part of the pedestrian overlay, and as well as an entrance off of Lake Street, really kind of forces us into a situation where the building architecture doesn't lend a whole lot of opportunity for building signage. Obviously, Wells Fargo is and has been there for several years. If you're familiar with the area, they're closing down the branch that's across the street from this existing location on Humboldt and consolidating all efforts into this one property. So, really, I mean, taking a $2.2 to $2.5 million investment in reinvesting into this property, and the grade change does, as staff alluded to, force us into a situation where the signage needs to be a little bit taller than code allows. That 14-foot really pushes us into a situation where the number one rule in retail is to have signage over your front door. Well, our front doors, we actually have two on Lake and then one on Humboldt as well. We need to have signage over those doors, and at the same time, we don't want to modify the architecture and eliminate those awnings that really do capture that pedestrian-oriented feel that this area is looking for. I'd also like to point out that in this zone, yes, we're C1, Zone C1, but we are the furthest east property in this C1 zone. Directly across the street, C3. No height regulations on signage. And all of the signs that we have at this property are going to be facing, well, the sign along Humboldt is obviously going to be facing towards C3, and the one on Lake is going to be facing across the street to the, I apologize if I mispronounce it, but the Bruegers Bagels, I believe, and they have signage. I actually have a photo of that as well, in excess of 14 feet. And it's a unique scenario, because again, right across the street, if we were six feet further or one lane of Humboldt over, we wouldn't have this issue, but unfortunately, we do. And again, I don't think anybody can argue being out at the site today, and Tony from Wells Fargo, I apologize, but this is definitely an upgrade to the existing property as it was, and I know that Wells Fargo's functioned there for years and years. But the new architecture that the community is going to get, I think lends to that pedestrian, quote-unquote, "feel." We've reduced the overall signage. Actually, the signs that we're asking for now are under the code-allowed square footage. And also, we looked at the sign that's on the south elevation that was the only one that truly faced residentially zoned properties, and we eliminated it. I mean, obviously, if people can find the Wells Fargo, they're going to park in back if they, you know, do drive to this location, which because of the business model of the five-to-seven mile radius that we pull from, people are going to be driving to this facility. We don't need a sign on that south. We can do without it. We don't want to ask for more than we need. So, that's why we modified that building height architecture that you can see in the slide that's still on the screen. And at the same time, I think maintaining the pedestrian-oriented aspects of it is important. I would like to show, there's one additional slide that I think will, and staff, you might have, Kimberly might have to help me with navigating this machine. I mean, this is what, sorry, this is what we're talking about in the built environment. I mean, that's what it's going to look like. I don't think, I don't think it looks out of line. The windows are obviously a key point of visual interest. The awnings are going to be obviously a tie-in to the pedestrian feel, and I've got more slides of other businesses that have the awning. So, I mean, I think that's extremely important. As you can see at that, at the intersection, we do have a step-up on Lake. It's actual stairs. On Humboldt, it's the actual ramp, and you can see that visual grade difference. I think it's appropriate. I think it's the scale of the area. It's really looking at this building architecture. Unless we start getting rid of awnings, which is not what we're looking to do at all, there's really no other place to put this sign. So, we're respectfully requesting for your help to allow us to properly identify this building.
Right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Commissioner Kronzer, I think Commissioner Kronzer has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. The glazing above the entry doors, does that go to the top of the awning?
That goes, I believe there, you know what? I'd have better, oh, it's in this, I believe there is a better rendering that will show exactly where that glazing stops. To answer your question, no. There is a little bit of brick area underneath where that would be. I don't know how we zoom in on, but the window line would be consistent from, across the elevation, so it would more or less, the bottom of the awning, I believe, lines up with where the top of the glazing would be. And again, that 14, there is a 14-foot line. It's kind of hard to see on this representation, but it's right here, so that shows, you know, where 14-foot actually puts us.
Commissioner Slack, do you have a question for that?
I have a question. Maybe it's more for staff, actually. I think, Kimberly, you made a point to identify that the first floor level within this zoning district is not essentially up to date based on the allowable first floor level. So, has staff given any thought to what the site or sign height might be if the first floor level was increased? And would that better align with this proposal, or no?
Are you saying if we changed the sign regulations?
Say, per se, if the height of the first floor level, which sounds like it's not potentially where it should be, I think you said it's at 14 feet, it's, or this code aligns with one that would be 14 feet versus where it's at at 20 feet now. If it's at 20 feet, what would the actual sign height be allowed within that district?
Previously, when the zoning code allowed for the first floor of buildings to only be 14 feet in height, the maximum sign allowance in C1 or the maximum height allowance matched up with that maximum height. So, 14 feet was the maximum height for the first floor, and 14 feet was the maximum height for a sign on the first floor. We haven't talked about it in great detail, but I could imagine if we were to look at that. Right now, we allow the first floor buildings to be 20 feet in height, so if we were to change the sign regulations for C1, it would probably fall somewhere in there. Nothing's been introduced on that, but some context.
Commissioner Magrino, you have a question for staff?
Yeah. You might not have this offhand, but do you know about what the window requirement was for that north elevation, and, you know, are they exceeding that? Or, you know, because they've kind of got a limited space to work with below 14 feet there, and I'm just wondering if, you know, they had to do a certain amount of windows there?
I don't recall exactly where they came in, but the requirement, because they're in the PO, is 40% on that elevation. And then with the grade change, because we only measure between two feet and 10 feet, I think what they're showing here is pretty close to what we would, I think they were just over 40% between that two-foot and 10-foot range.
Mm-hmm. All right. Thanks.
All right. Are there any further questions of Commissioner Rockwell?
Are the awnings, they're not required in the pedestrian overlay district, nor did we condition this on having awnings, correct?
They are not required in the PO, nor were they conditioned. They are encouraged in the PO, and the Uptown Small Area Plan does have quite a bit of language about encouraging awnings along Lake Street to create a better pedestrian experience, but it was not a specific condition of approval.
Right. So, there's nothing preventing, removing the awnings?
Per code, no.
All right. And the public hearing is still open, so is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there's no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Yeah. I'm going to actually make a motion to approve the variance, to increase the maximum allowable height from 14 feet to 19 feet, 4 inches. And my reasoning behind it is I do believe practical difficulties do exist. I think that the grade change in the lot that actually prohibits them from being at the ground level at the front, combined with the fact that we haven't updated that, and in addition to the fact that they have such a massive glazing requirement mainly due to that raised floor height, and then the addition of awnings, which will not require it, are strongly encouraged to give it a pedestrian scale in appearance, do create a bit of practical difficulties, along with, actually, number two, which is about reasonable use. And I do think that what they're proposing is reasonable. I think that the changes they've made to the building to lower the height actually has made it, the building seem more in scale with the pedestrian environment. I think that if it were, if the awnings were removed, it might not have that same sense of proportion to a human being on the sidewalk. So, I think that they've woven together some basic elements in actually a very tight little package that actually makes it work. So, I don't think they're being, asking for anything unreasonable, and I think that the practical difficulties do exist that would allow this to happen.
All right. And I believe I heard a second from Commissioner Kronzer, a strict follower of Robert's rules, before Commissioner Lukey Pierre elaborated. Is there any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I would just add to the reasonableness is that the signs are within the permitted area of the zoning code now, which is, kind of adds to my thinking of thinking they're reasonable.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Slack?
I would also say that if the sign were to meet the current ordinance, then potentially the sign would have to require the removal of the awnings, at least at the two corners. And I think that they really help bring down the scale of the building, and so, to me, that really changes the scale, especially that corner treatment, and I think maybe then goes against sort of the idea of really reinforcing the pedestrian environment. So, where the sign's located and maintaining the awnings, I think is appropriate.
Commissioner Vreeland?
Oh, yes. Apparently, we're spending a lot of time on Port Parkway, but there is a Wells Fargo sort of across from Lunds in that area. And I was just so surprised at how small the sign was there, and it's above the door. There is a large sign on the side of a fairly large parking rav that has some height to it, but it's Wells Fargo, and it's probably between 10 and 12 feet off the ground. I'm just wondering if St. Paul has asked you to do different things in longitude and all, and so I don't have any problems with the amended motion, but there is a very pedestrian-oriented look of the St. Paul facility that I think has some value in how we look at signs in the future.
Okay. And I'll just add that also Lake Street at this location is a commercial corridor in the city's comprehensive plan, and while this site is Zone C1, there is more intense zoning, just, well, actually adjacent to it, and that in combination with the other reasons that were stated, I think helps us meet the finding related to not altering the character of the area. There are other properties that have more signage and higher signage than this. So, if there's no further discussion, Clerks, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
That's eight zero.
All right. And that motion carries. That includes our discussion on this. Item four. Next item for discussion is item seven. Thank you. Item seven is also signs. We have an all-sign meeting today. These signs at HCMC, 801 through 829 Park Avenue, 715 through 721 Eighth Street, and 816 Chicago Avenue. Staff is Ms. Widmeyer.
It's near their clinic, if you're not familiar with it. It's just to the south of the emergency room of their hospital campus, and they are proposing to do a master sign plan. The site is zone B4N, and it's also in the downtown parking overlay district. With their middle, they included their entire master plan, but only a few of the signs need additional approvals, rest comply with the sign requirements. Just briefly, the applications are requesting our conditional use permit to increase the height of two wall signs, a variance to increase the maximum height, or a maximum area, excuse me, of one other wall sign, a variance to increase the maximum number of freestanding signs, and an amendment to their site plan review that was done previously, that's in relation to the signs that are proposed under the conditional use permit to increase maximum height. For this presentation, I'll just focus on the signs that are going to need the additional approvals, and I'll start with those, the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height. For larger buildings in downtown districts, the conditional use permit is authorized to increase maximum height. Those signs can be up to 300 square feet, excuse me, in area. So, the proposed signs, one would be on the west building elevation, and one would be on the south building elevation, so the south one is up currently. They do comply with all the standards to qualify for increasing the maximum height. Here's the one on the east, or excuse me, west elevation facing Park Avenue, and they are proposed, or the tallest one is at 88.5 feet above grade. The other one is slightly lower. So, they would be at the sixth floor level of the building. The proposed signs would not have any impact to adjacent properties. As you can see, for the south-facing sign, which is closest to a residential property, which would be an apartment building located to the south of it on the same block, it's 40 feet above the top of that apartment building, and that's not accounting for horizontal distance. The materials of the sign would be compatible with the building. The design is compatible. We didn't find any, or bring up any concerns with these proposals for these signs. As I mentioned, they did comply with all the other standards for increased type. So, for this application, we're recommending approval. Moving on to the variance to increase the maximum area of a sign. Now, that sign is located over the main entrance, which would be facing Eighth Street. They only have one main entrance on the building, and so the variance request is to increase the maximum sign area from 120 square feet to 263 square feet. The sign is located across from the emergency room, so it won't be impacting any adjacent properties. On this building wall, they're actually allowed 2.5 square feet of signage per linoleum foot of building wall. So, overall, on this Eighth Street facing elevation, they're allowed 775 square feet of sign area. This is the only sign that's proposed on this elevation, so they're not proposing an amount of signage that would create clutter. This is the only sign here, and even though it's larger than what would be allowed for an individual sign, it's much smaller than what would be allowed for the overall amount of signage. So, for those reasons, again, with the design and not creating clutter, we are recommending approval of that sign. Then moving on to the variance for the number of freestanding signs. Normally, in any zoning lot, you're only allowed to do one freestanding sign. They're asking for four. So, they are requesting the variance. This site takes up almost an entire block. They are proposing a freestanding sign, one on each corner, and that's to provide wayfinding for people to get to their clinic and also the emergency room. So, hospitals do have unique identification needs, so that was taken into consideration to make sure that people know where to go. Also, the sign design, they would, the sizes of each one would comply with the size requirements for any freestanding sign. They're eight feet tall and not more than 32 square feet in area. I'm showing this one because it's the one proposed at Ninth and Park, which is located in the historic district, and it's the one that's closest to adjacent residential uses. It's 50 feet from that apartment building that I mentioned earlier, but still substantially separated from it. And then this one, they did propose to do some additional ornamentation with ironwork to make it more compatible with that historic district and residential area. The other signs, although the same size and design, as far as materials go, don't include that ironwork. So, again, for these, we found that, you know, these are needed for wayfinding, so we did recommend approval of these as well. And so I don't forget, going back to those wall signs, I mentioned they need the site plan review amendment, and that was specifically because they previously did not get alternative compliance for blank walls exceeding 25 feet in length. There used to be windows in these locations. Uh, there were, used to be windows in these locations. And so the request is just to amend the site planner review to, um, basically remove and eliminate those windows to allow places for the signage to be located. Given the size of the building and the amount of windows that they have elsewhere, they're still exceeding all their minimum windows, window, minimum window requirements. We're recommending approval of the alternative compliance request as well. Um, that concludes my presentation. I can take any questions?
All right. Are there any questions of staff? Maybe, Janelle, you can just clarify, um, for the sign facing Eighth Street, uh, would the, if, if that variance is approved, would the maximum sign allowance still be capped at 775? If in the future they put additional signs on that wall, that 263 would, would be, uh, a part of that?
That's correct. Um, yeah, they're still limited to 2.5 square feet of sign area per linear foot of building wall. Um, so this wouldn't allow them to go above and beyond that. This is just a variance of the individual sign limitation.
Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I had two questions. Is, is the new clinic really called New Clinic?
No, it's not. They have not chosen, or the naming rights are still out there. So this is just kind of a placeholder, but they know that they're going to need additional size.
So what happens if the name's longer than New Clinic?
They'll have to work with.
Are we coming back? More signs? Uh, my second question is a little more serious at the corner of Ninth. Has staff looked at how people would actually travel to this facility? There is several one-way streets in the area. It seems to me that a lot of folks would be coming around this corner in a vehicle to get to the parking. I'm just wondering if there's been that analysis done.
Uh, yes. Ninth would be a one-way going west towards downtown. Um, Chicago is a two-way street. Um, Park is one-way again, but going north towards the river and then Eighth is also one-way. So, um, the anticipated traffic flow would be that people would most likely come to the main entrance, drop someone off and then need to navigate around the site to get to the parking. Um, because they obviously can't go back on Eighth, that would be going the wrong way again. Um, Park has a similar issue. So they'd have to go around the block. So that's why they're looking at, um, making sure that they have appropriate signage and navigation for people.
Are there any other questions of staff? Uh, if there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the planning commission. My name is Michael Noonan. I live at 2258 Fieldstone Drive in Moana Heights, but I'm here today representing HCMC as an employee of Hennepin County. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity. Uh, the staff report, which has been prepared and presented, we think does a, a wonderful job in terms of the describing of our ask as well as the presentation of our master plan. I think if I could point to one comment in, in the staff report, I would, uh, point to a, a portion on page four, which talks about the unique nature of the hospital and its identification needs. And that signs being appropriate, not only to provide for the identification, but also the way, wayfinding. And certainly that was one of the primary goals that we established in working with our sign consultants. Not only the identification, but the wayfaring. Uh, in response to your question, Commissioner Kronzer, wayfaring was very important for the reasons expressed by Ms. Widmire Meyer in terms of the, the nature of the one-way streets and having to circumnavigate the block to get to the parking. In addition, depending upon where you enter the site, we wanted to make sure that individuals would be able to, uh, identify where they need to go to, uh, the emergency versus the clinic as well. So it is very important. And the, the signs on each of the four corners, we think, plays an extremely important role. The other findings that were alluded to, I think, speak volumes in terms of the appropriateness of our application. We have worked fairly closely with the Elliott Park neighborhood. However, you will see a letter in your package, which provides support for the majority of our applications, save and accept the monument sign located at Ninth and Park. And I think, as we've expressed, we believe that the monument signs to provide for that consistent wayfaring are important. If you, uh, you have access to the, uh, the, the plans. So if you look at plans 6A, 6B, and 6C, they provide a perspective of the placement of that sign relative to the pocket park. We were very sensitive to its location, not intruding into the pocket park, but also coming forward with a design that was somewhat reflective of the street furniture, the park furniture and the nature there by bringing in those iron elements and providing a decorative feel that has, has a minor historic read to it. The other thing I would point out is a comment that's contained on page three of the report, which talks under the section Related Approvals. And this is a specific comment that talks about that corner being located within Heritage District, the Ninth Street Heritage District. But it also goes on and forward. And this was certainly reflected when we came before, uh, the planning commission and the HPC at a, uh, at a Cow meeting, where we asked for direction with respect to signage and for the development of that corner. And quite clearly, the direction that we got was that the guidelines from the historic district didn't really apply to signage here. Uh, we took that to heart and we were very careful in our design and trying to, ensuring that it was insensitive, not only to the street, but also is sensitive to the, the park area that we are looking to create. And then finally, to answer your question with respect to the naming, uh, no, it's not going to be called Duke Clinic, although it's quite an elegant name. I'm sure you would agree, but, um, it, it will be taken out as part of our development in terms of the development opportunities whereby, uh, uh, we will offer naming rights for the clinic. We have not started that. We wanted to get the approvals in place, the master plan approved, so that we'd have a complete package that we could take out to interested parties. Um, I'm not sure we've started knocking on doors as of yet. And I can assure you that if it is some lengthy name with a whole number of initials, we'll make it work within the square footage that we've been approved. It's not my intention or HCMC's intention to come back and ask for a, a further relief if we get some name that doesn't fit within the plus or minus 300 feet that we have on the upper levels. So with that, um, you know, I, I would respectfully request support of all our applications. We believe that they're appropriate in all cases. I think the staff report goes in considerable length to describing and justifying them. Uh, we respectfully disagree with our friends from Elliott Park. And we would hope that we could, uh, uh, get the approval so that we can move forward. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Commissioner Kronzer?
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Can you describe this ornamental work on the sign?
Uh, sorry?
The, the ornamental work that's proposed on the sign at Ninth? Uh, is it, I'm looking through this sort of grassy stuff down below the word. Is that actually ironwork that's painted that you can see through? Or is that a eighth-inch piece of steel that's applied to a, uh, an acrylic backlit something?
No, the, um, so I guess if we go to, what, six? Is that what, your 6A?
Yeah, 6A.
6A. So that gives you a, a feel. So there's really two elements of the ornamental. Number one is there is a roughly a, uh, 12-inch piece at the base of the sign, located another foot off of ground, so it's above the snow. And what that is, is that is an open iron element. So what we'll have is it'll, it'll have some texture. It'll have some visibility through it as well. I think there was also the concern on the part of it, of the, the neighborhood, about not making the entire sign a blank and therefore a, a place to hide.